Call the meeting to order. In the day reserving board. Our. Order of our agenda is we'll start with the prejudicial reasons for this slide and then there'll be a moment of silence after that for our troops. And following that, we'll get into our. Thank you. Okay, um. Our procedure for our meetings are hybrid and have a room numbers as well. The applicants for experience. The microphone identify themselves, tell us why they would like to have variance. We order them to ask some questions, clarify their reading medium. Have a discussion when the. Board is sent for their questions, we'll ask for any comments from the audience, both here and at home. People at home on mute until they communicate with the mic that they're presenting. After the public input, the applicant is given the option of being able to close this public hearing. And if we do that, after the public hearings vote, we have twenty, we have sixty-two days to make a decision. We generally will make this decision in a minute. Uh, okay. The first on the on the on the agenda, the first one has been withheld till next month because the. People from three, three, seventy, Fallbrook Park are not able to be here. Uh, the next one is a continued hearing. Uh, Susan Wade, four, one, four, eight County Road sixteen. Applicants proposing construction of a ninety square foot paper patio next to the system shed. A lot coverage variance of one point two percent was requested in addition to twelve point one percent. Lot coverage variance previously granted out fifty-three point three percent is proposed and forty percent is a maximum. Variance for the third accessory structure is also uh being requested. As the patio is constructed. This is continued from last month, we discussed it before, we had I think two major questions that we were asking. For our own education as much as anything was we had asked the ECB about maintenance of papers. And we hope everybody got that from us. They do take regular regular maintenance to remain. I mean, vulnerable. Uh, the second. The second thing we had asked for all was a question of the the effect on the lake. Of putting a semi vulnerable paper. In versus having lawn. And I think I talked to a couple of the board members in there, I think that's really a hard question to answer. It all depends on whether people are following the guidelines or not using fertilizers, insecticides. If we run off of the lawn into the lake, I don't know. And. I don't think there's a definite answer to that. But. Anybody have any comments or their impressions on them?
Just that when we what what the ECB responded with, is it permeable, they definitely came back with it's not fully permeable. It's there's there's percentages there, yeah.
And it's dependent on.
And the maintenance is absolutely correct, yep.
And this was, this was, I mean. It's the table, right? I mean, this is the one that was in the table.
Why don't we just get closer to public hearings then? Okay. Well, let's see, new public hearings. Brand that locked for five, two, five, zero North Street, Ganondaga requesting six ranges to allow insulation, six fence mounted signs, area variance of twenty. Square feet when eighty square feet is required, hundred square foot sign is proposed. Uh, area variance of five point five feet for front setback or fifteen feet on the deck. And nine point five uh is proposed for a ten foot ground mounted sign. The applicant. I didn't address it, yeah, come on up to the. My phone and I identify yourself and.
I'm Scott with Flat Signs in Geneva, and I've been asked to represent package in getting this variance. Uh, they they changed the name to Pack of Evergreen and they installed a lot of new signs here over the last six months. And they all conform conforms the code. Pretty much, they just added one new sign. And all the other ones confirmed except for these that were requesting the variance. And um, so one is the monument sign. On North Street, I mentioned all three. Yeah, we're asking for three separate variances and. So the the one for the monument sign. It's uh, you're asking it's off of the horse, there it is, no, that's the the one entering, we can address that one if you want. But that one is the an entrance sign into the tech center. Off of Brickyard Road. And they don't have a sign identifying the entrance there, very busy. Uh, it's not, you're not, we're not allowed to put a sign on the fence. So in this particular case, I would have made sense to put a sign on the fence, but um, the fence was um. Uh, like four feet in front of the property line. So um, that's why we're asking for a variance of about four feet. Um, because. Well, I have to refer to my drawings here, it's complicated. Yeah, initially, had we mounted it, you know, we could have mounted on the fence, but we were only like four feet off. So we proposed to put a sign four feet in front of that fence. And um. So it it shouldn't affect anybody, it doesn't affect visibility, when the big tractor trailers pull in there, they shouldn't hit it. And. And that's uh, so that's what we're requesting, just the variance of about four feet, so we can put that sign there. The size itself conformed to the code, wasn't an issue with that. So. Just to keep it neat, you know, I got this neat post and panel sign, well, they're single sided, that's all they ask for. Well, so that's one variance request. And then another one is um, this one here, this one is off in North Street. Uh, this would be their main identification sign, they currently have one that you see down in the left hand corner. It's actually a little bit bigger than what we're asking for, that's probably five and a half feet by twelve and a half feet. Uh, but when they researched it, apparently there wasn't, they couldn't find any real permit that had been issued for that years ago. So we want to put up this sign in the same place as that, using the existing structure, the electric is out to it and everything. And the actual sign is but is a little bit smaller. It's lighted internally and but it's, you know, it's a huge property, it sets on, it sets just behind the fence. In front of the pond. Uh, replacing that double sided sign.
So the new sign is going to be a little smaller, is that what you said?
Yeah, the new sign is actually a little smaller than that, but the the code only allows eighty square feet. Which would be a forty square foot sign each side, and this is fifty square feet, so we're just asking for a variance for twenty square feet. For that. Then the third variance is for the signs on the fence. And uh, so let's see, get some picture of that up there. Yeah, okay. Okay, we're asking for a variance for six fence signs, uh, four out of the six are kind of regulatory, um, no smoking. Uh, no loitering, um, a gate opens sign, a form related to kind of regulatory needed information. And there's only two we're replacing on the fence. Uh, that identifies their uh, the business, the facility. And this one is off of Summers Road, off of Airport Road and Summers Road, so it's a dedicated drive to the mixing facility. So we just want to replace the sign on the left that's on the fence with the one that you see there. And we're going to use aluminum brackets on the backside, nice and neat so they don't rust. So, you know, that's one we want, then we they want another one on the fence for the entrance off of North Street. There's a one they want, it's a regulatory sign. And we did take down three or four signs, two on the fence and two post mounted signs that were just kind of clutter around the whole area. No variance for that one, never regulate the. Yeah, and this is the one entering off of North Street. Uh, replaces the existing one on the fence. And there. That's what they want to do, just identify coming off of North Street, but. Uh, it was proposed, uh, one be on the ground like this other one, a ground mounted perpendicular sign. But uh, there's not as much room between the fence and the road. And just the fear is that big tractor trailers, you know, going out of the facility might catch it and knock it down or. Um, again, we're just thought we, it was clutter being, we just thought that it staying on the fence in this particular situation was a better bet. So that's what they're asking the variance for is these, those two fence fence signs and the four regulatory smaller signs. That kind of sums it up.
What is the reason they use the code of not allowing fence signs?
Because not everybody puts signs up like active, is my assumption, you know. There is, you know, this is a chain link fence, but you could get a really rusted chain link fence and, you know, think about junkyard. Signs on fences and think that's what it's really trying to do.
The regulatory regulatory stuff, we don't, it's not our purview, or is it really under the, because I mean, isn't that like a safety?
A little bit of each, you know, there's regulations as to where those signs can go. Um, usually they're pole mounted, the other reason chip is. For sign mounted or fence mounted. Visual, it's a, you know, sight distances. You could run into the problem of you can see through a chain link fence, uncoming traffic, but not if there's someone. Or maybe, I don't know in this city.
You know, and this particular one is far from the road, and you gotta drive another fifteen, twenty feet to get where you stop your vehicle.
You said the fence is four foot over, or would you say four, not here? Oh, not this one, but I mean, on the other, on one side.
The fence um. The 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 property line is just behind the fence. And uh, and so the code. Says that it's supposed to be um, so far from the property line.
Is there a reason on that one it couldn't be fence mounted?
Um. Uh, no, it it could be, it it could be, it wouldn't be as good a visibility on the fence, I I feel. But it could be.
Well, one of our charges when we ask questions is, are are you uh, going with your favorite option? Or what were the other choices? And I think about the first one you mentioned, because you you had said. You would prefer not being on the fence, but it could be, so uh, if it if it was on the fence, would it still require a variance?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, it it would require because it's uh, still not probably set back from the property line. But it would, you know, help the, you know, for the trucks and stuff, it does help identify it much better when there's a sign there. Rather than driving by it and trying to turn around or something like that, so. That's the purpose of it.
Mike, can you scroll through and count the six? Fence mounted signs so that we're all on the same page? I I think the other. Packet might have. I I don't. Mind this one, but there's also where it had the picture of each one. Yeah.
The bulk of them were off of Summers Drive. For that?
Uh, Summers Drive, there's just the one on the fence that says packet everything.
Okay, regulatory signs are where?
They're um.
At the north?
They're they're more off of Brickyard Road.
That's why I thought it would be useful to scroll through this, because we can see when they're replacing an existing one and that kind of.
Now, they're all, there's two entrances there for Brickyard now, right in there.
So that's the first one, then the other four are replacing the blue signs, they're one of them. So that one would like you're doubling the square footage of sign. Third one. Fourth. Fifth one. And then the sixth is the last one. That goes, that that shows the entrance, I don't think any of these are outside of. Code as far as size, so the first line is there are six variances because they are six. Mounted fence mounted signs. Then there's the monument sign and the pedestal sign, so there's, those are the three that we're looking at, well, nine that we're looking at.
Mike, can you confirm that? I think I, I think I agree with what Shannon just.
Shannon said is correct, the the six signs. Uh, the other one is the bolts reference. You have a question that the board answered, yeah. Are you comfortable with what you presented?
Uh, yes.
Close the public hearing. Close the public hearing, we have sixty-two days to make a decision, but they're trying to make it. Yes, okay, you're welcome to stay for our discussion. There's not to say it isn't jeopardized, Mike, tomorrow about. Anybody in the audience, if you're at home, have any comments? There are none, go ahead.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, the next one, uh. Greg Moore, three, two, two, five. Uh, Sabre, three, sixty-four, Ganondaga, requesting area variance. For eighty-nine point six, two, six square foot sign, where ninety-five is required, one hundred and eighty-four square feet, if I were questioned. For a vertical speed sign.
Hi, good afternoon, this is Kelly Wagner with June Signs for the Sierra Project.
Okay. You could discuss why you are requesting the variance.
Yeah, so we currently have a ninety point eighty-eight square foot set of channel letters installed on the storefront, which is within code. Our allowance is ninety-five square feet. We're pursuing an additional eighty-nine point twenty-six square feet for a five foot set of channel letters. Storefront area is approximately nine hundred, sign area is approximately nine hundred and seventy square feet. The sign on the building currently is not proportionate with the sign area. There's also no pylon sign at this location, so the only ID on the building to uh, for the business is on the storefront. Uh, it's a new brand in the Canadega area as well. And the setback from the road for this particular building is approximately five hundred feet.
Yeah, that's what's. No, that's a, it's pretty late.
That is an unusual situation where you. You want signing, you have it on the front of the building, and all of your signs are.
Or they're neighboring, so we're not even need additional sign. Let's, you know, kitchen mats, let's.
I can't hear Kelly.
Sorry, what does TJ Maxx have right next door, because we, they came to us for a lighted sign, additional sign, oh, that.
Yeah, the TJ Maxx and the Home Goods Store adjacent to this location was just the, the storefront was just remodeled. And. Those channel letters, I believe there are two sets of channel letters on the storefront each at three foot six inches high. They're installed horizontally, they're two separate brands with uh, it was additionally a stacked copy which which were removed. And permits were issued for three foot six inch channel letters for both brands independently.
There is almost twice.
I would like to see what many there, you know, what the other businesses, you know. Randomized variances or. You know, the other businesses around.
They go to a street view?
That's all. I hope. Yeah, it's not fine, I can have the new store on it, but. Said it's not, yes. Yeah, it's from two thousand fifteen. I know that TJ Maxx was just in recently, like within like a year or so ago, and. I know that that was, it was an increase above what we were, was allowed, but they were requesting, so I'm just curious to see, because we denied that. With step law, there was, you don't recall?
I'd like to, I'd like to, no, well, I don't remember the details, I'd like to review.
Apparently I'm the historian, right?
I guess, good for you.
Yeah, so I I that was like last year, I was, or maybe. What were you saying, you'd like to see?
I'd like, I would like to see what the details with the Max.
Right.
Application was.
Right. I mean. We didn't, you know, be setting a precedent over what we denied before, right? I'd rather, I'd like to check that too. All right. Yeah, I think. Just that, well, this one's a lot larger, it looks like to me, because I didn't even notice it was there until the other day, I was like. I don't believe it, so sometimes, but, yeah, I, it was like.
Keep the public hearing open?
Yeah, sure, I think, right.
I would sketch some more information. It's already up there, so it's like, I can't change it.
No, right. What do you think?
Yeah, I think that makes sense.
Okay.
Kelly, can you hear us? You wanted to take a look at some of the other signs around there and check to see whether any variances have been branded. And then revisit it next month.
Okay, thank you.
We'll continue with that one, if there are any. Uh, next is three, three, one, four, Fallbrook Park, I have to read. Requesting a variance for building coverage of eighty-three, six percent, they have proposed building coverage of thirty-three point six percent. When twenty-five percent is required.
Mister Chairman, I'm going to recuse myself on this one, let Jason have this one.
Very happy people, thank you for giving up a beautiful evening, one of the rarities in Western New York, ninety degrees. And I thank you for your service, by the way. So seeker doesn't tell you how to stop or prevent a development, it tells you how to write, right? And I think this development, as you'll see, is right for us, right for the town and right for the neighborhood. So um, I just got a couple of quick points to make, it has a minimal impact, it's the smallest variance as you can see on that sheet there. Uh, it's sized both on building coverage and lot coverage. Uh, the walls here tonight, Mike Wall and Ann Wall, my wife also is here, she's the applicant, the one in white with the white blouse. Um, so there are a couple houses to the south of us. Vestals and well, our our northern neighbors, uh, got an email from them, you'll see another email from our other neighbor to the south, Barb Willis. And Bagara, I couldn't find whether that application is still pending, um, it it stopped at like in March of last year. But you can see they're sorted by lot size and then building coverage, and we're smallest in both categories. In fact, under lot allowed, we're still five percent under. And I I know Dr. Saylor stopped down and saw the house the other day. It's an old, it's a hundred year old, I I think a kit house, like a Sears Kit House, uh, that was quite compact, uh, very efficient and, but again, a hundred years old. And so it's a center stairwell, um, colonial, all right, so four bedrooms up and then a space is downstairs. Really not suitable for year round living, we would have loved, my wife and I would have loved to have kept the house, but uh, I suspect the foundation was an old ice house, it was the case's old farm. Uh, we got still the ramp legs buried underneath the deck, and the the foundation is a great big open, there makes no sense, but. It might have made sense if there's getting ice up uh, into the old house, so it's built on that foundation. Let's see, so we talked about the lot coverage, uh, the building coverage is is a very minimal and certainly consistent with the neighborhood. Uh, the bulk of the forty lots that are down on Fallbrook are mostly fifty footers, there's a couple, there's a thirty-five footer, some are doubled up, I think there's a seventy-five. But the ones I compared are all fifty foot lots, so they're immediate adjacent to it, so you can see we're consistent with what the town has granted and consistent with the neighborhood. But, uh, the ones I've compared are all fifty-foot lots, so they're immediately adjacent to it, so you can see we're consistent with what the town has granted and consistent with the neighborhood. Uh, again, our neighbors, um, uh, support this as well, so that's important. Uh, in fact, I'll turn it over, it's Dan and Mike want to speak, uh, they're just in the middle of a project right now, so, uh, and Mike's going to speak, go ahead.
I think Mike wants.
I can't wait.
Actually, the boss.
No, I'm Anne Wall, my husband Mike and I, um, own the property two houses south from the Reeds, and we're just here in support of it, you guys did our. We went through it with you last time, and they're asking for even less than we did, so, um, just going on the record and saying we're in support of their project.
Also, anything you missed?
No. Did you help them with the process, seeing that you've been through it?
Of course, I mean, the same builder, too.
Well, the nice thing is that the entire street just continues to get nicer and nicer. So it's, I mean, it's, I mean, that's, that's the key here.
All right, so we get a thumbs up from you, right?
Well, you know, I mean, it's a beautiful thing, so.
Well, it's, 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 thought of, said when we moved in, said, it was probably approaching ninety, not ninety-five, then. But it says, like, a vacation here every day, never free out, I guess. So, gang, any questions?
I guess the question you always, always ask, is there any way you could change the variance request?
I don't think so, um, we're going from a one-car to a two-car garage, that's the bulk of it. Um, and then, so, so, that's the, the roadside variance. On the lakeside, it just makes sense to clear off the porch, we're asking for one point eight feet on either side of an old sun porch, a seasonal sun porch. Just to square it up in the house, so that, um, we got two bedrooms in the front, and we'd be able to preserve the lake view from those bedrooms, so. And it's significant, because that one point eight feet still stays within the eight-foot side lot setback, so, uh, the garage is tight to the line. Uh, as you can see, I, I've got old eyes, so not much stayed here, but that's a pre-existing non-conform use, it will not be lengthened, uh, and then any expansion is within our side of the lot, so that's what we have.
So you're expanding the garage to the north?
Right.
And then where's the, like, so you're not moving any closer to the lake either, nothing's changing?
Not forward, um, you, you can see, sorry. Um, see the kayak's here? That's a deck, it's a, then, uh, importantly, it's pretty, it's only expanded, the deck itself, the porch right here, the sun porch, you can see the roof line. Gable part here comes down, the socket right here, that's one point eight, one point eight feet. So that'll bring it up a little bit. And then it's still, you know, the sides are straightening out. Yes, yes.
Are you parent, using new materials and everything on the existing, or the non-conform, you're not changing any of that, or you said you are?
Uh, we're planning next, uh, of course, they'll, they'll have their whack at it, but, uh, you know, exterminators will all be demolished. Hopefully, we can renovate or save some of the old windows and refurbish some doors, things like that. Some, you know, it's old, old glass, so it's kind of interesting things. All right. Anything else, gang?
Anybody else in the audience?
Thank you, folks.
Now, the ACV did motion comments concerned about, you know, the areas already that, uh, may run off, and they, they recommend. The county, I think, also that, so that's the base thing, the super majority. The county, if the county recommends something to be denied by us, we have, you know, the super majority to pass.
Um, let's, yeah, I'm not surprised by that, but why would the county deny it? Uh, is it a minute routine, I guess?
I, they, they are very, very strict on looking at lot coverage right along with.
You're in the land of pre-existing non-conformities there, and, you know.
Yeah, but a minute, it isn't.
Anything else?
Are you comfortable with us pushing, you know, both?
Oh, please, yeah, let's get out of here.
I, I actually have one more thing I'd like to ask. So the variance is basically from one garage to two-car garage. And, uh, we will use this house for our, it's not the, it's our second house, it is our living house.
Year-round.
And year-round house, so, uh, two-car garage is kind of nice path, uh, especially with the winters and everything. And because we live there full-time, so that's the only thing I would like to add.
I guess we could always add, how's parking there, too? Like, those are pretty tight.
Yeah, it's, uh, pretty much on a fifty-foot lodge, you get whatever your garage apron is. We get single, if we go to double, that's two cars, uh, and then on the other side of the road, um, so you see the rolling out? Um, and then the other side, if I had permission, of course, they own that, uh, we can fit about four cars in there.
And our neighbors are great, they always allow other people to, you know, use a gathering party, or support people to park at our place, and it's a really nice, we have great neighbors, works out well.
I have a question, Chip. Does their lot coverage calculation include not just the garage, but the extension of the driveway?
I believe so, and, uh, you've got the, the site plan's up there from, um, Mark's Engineering Center, I think it's all, all calculated in.
Okay.
And again, it's, I, I, the reason why, I think, is just such a tight, tight, uh, house plan, you know, the original footprint, and we're going to mostly stay within the original footprint, so.
Can, can you, I think I heard that you're staying within the original footprint, except you're expanding the deck and the back.
The sun porch.
The sun porch by one point eight feet on either side.
Correct.
That's your lot cover, that extends your lot coverage, expands your lot coverage.
Right, plus the garage.
Plus one-car garage and one-car drive. That's your increase?
Yeah, right, I, I assume the apron goes, uh, I think they, they drove the aprons, you can see the apron there.
Yeah, oh, okay.
Okay, but again, it's, you know, significant for the county, which, as far as I know, it's looking at it on paper, uh, that might make a physical appearance. I'll hold my other thoughts again, and I work for the county, but, uh, um, anyhow, we're still five, five percent under the total lot coverage, insignificant.
Actually, it's unusual not to have a lot covered.
Right, right? That's why, yeah.
Cheering, right?
Hey, anyone else? Everybody okay with closing the, uh?
You understand that, building coverage, then the driveway.
Right.
I just realized. Because it's unusual.
Yeah, right.
Okay, uh, we'll close the public hearing, we have assistant two ladies making decisions, we're moving along pretty well. You're watching the state for us, especially.
Good luck.
Okay, thanks for coming.
The next one, actually, was withdrawn, or not withdrawn, it's, yeah, like, are they revising?
Right.
It's gonna revise stuff, so.
What?
I, this is, I think he's not on the docket today. No, no, not the agenda, as you're saying, it's in tables or.
Yes, it's the last one.
You found that out today?
Done just this morning.
They're, they're Thursday. Okay, so he's, my understanding, just a little. You can tell, he was, tonight, he was supposed to be for his own egg.
So. They called this morning and asked, asked to put it off till next month, because they're going to revise their plans.
So we're going to have it, we'll have them in front of us next month.
Well, we can have his testimony out of the record. Well, no, I, it's like, but also, my understanding, beside this meeting, he's scheduled for June twenty-sixth at the planning board. So do we know if that one has been revised also, I don't want, you know, I don't want to take up anybody's time.
That will, that will most likely be changed as well.
So how will we be advised, or will we be advised?
Could you take this for a moment?
Yeah, it, uh.
Oh, sorry.
Oh, no, this is about, uh, it will, um, when he does go before the boards, everyone within five hundred feet is alerted.
Right, so, so the June eighteen is now going to be?
It'll be the third Thursday of July, so whatever.
July sixteen.
Or, excuse me.
Oh, well, good.
Sorry about that.
Okay, you're going to look up the date for it?
Yeah, I'll look at the date, I would have said Tuesday.
July sixteenth. And does that mean that the planning board for June twenty-sixth will also be?
I can't, we can't. I, I just don't know, my guess is it will change, that date will change.
Okay, so how will I, how can I find out?
A good call.
You can call Mike.
You call us, it'll be on the website.
Call him a couple days in advance and see if he's.
Yes.
Girl, do this phone.
You have Mike.
Yeah.
It's three ninety-four.
Hold on, what number?
Three ninety-four.
All right, three ninety-four, thank you.
One-one.
One?
Two-zero.
Thank you, and that would be the call to see that.
Call Mike Warner, W A R N E R.
W A N E R, twice?
Just one.
W A N E R.
W A R N.
Warner.
Oh, W A, okay. W A R N. Okay. Thank you, unless you want to hear it from me today, I don't know.
We haven't seen the plans.
Yeah, the plan's going to change, so it may be.
It might be beneficial for you to come back, only because we, it would be, we can put it together with the new plans, because we don't.
Okay, so, I will be able to, do I only have?
I mean, you're welcome to do it tonight, but I think I probably.
No, 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 might as well wait, but so he only, all I got was from the town was his map.
Gotcha.
And that was all that he submitted, I guess.
The map's going to change.
But that was all that he submitted initially, there wasn't all. Okay, beautiful, thank you. Have a good day.
You, too. Enjoy the heat.
Yes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, I'm glad you said that, it's totally.
Yeah, it would be hard to put it.
We had on the news.
The one who filed, last month. We had the decision sheet for the one who filed last month, we didn't shut tonight.
Right.
He, um, when I got the sheets, it said denied, and it was a vote taken, so I looked at the video. We never denied it, we never took a vote on it, so we have to vote on repealing that decision sheet, because it's been signed and logged.
Oh, really?
We have to vote now on getting rid of that decision sheet, because we just moved it to the town, and there was something that said denied, and it was voted on, so that was not, so I checked the video.
Right.
So, because it was put into the file, we have to vote.
So I'm going to make a motion to, to deny the decision for thirty, what was it?
Thirty-three, seven.
Seventy-eight, thirty-three, seventy-eight, Fallbrook.
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Right. Perfect.
Okay, um. Let's see. The Reeds here, we'll go ahead and we're first, first, first. Any? Comments? Okay, I'm sorry, go on, let me go. Three, three, one, four, Fallbrook.
Oh, we just stopped.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Procedure, nothing more, um. The, the intention is to keep within the existing footprint. But, and the existing footprint is a pre-existing non-conformity. But I thought, since it's a, I thought, I could be wrong, I thought, since it's a teardown, and they're rebuilding, they have to get that, those variances issued as well.
Uh, no.
Good.
But they are.
Right.
Like, are they expanding a non-conformity?
They're not.
They're not changing the non-conformity, but because they're starting over. It's not, it's not like they're just adding on to what's there, they're.
They're not moving outside the footprint, other than the garage.
Like, so.
I believe, oh, no, the one.
They're not moving any closer to the sidelines.
Correct, right.
Was their building coverage previously over what was allowed?
The building coverage previously was thirty point seven, they're already over. So, what they're going over now, the only, I know there's, there are excesses in New York, we're actually not going for that much.
My, and my question is purely setback.
No, they're good.
Okay, okay.
If you think it's, if you cease to operate, you're okay on a teardown rebuild?
Okay.
Or if your building is destroyed by fire? Or an act of God?
Okay.
But if you tear it down?
I thought it was like a refurbish was good, not a teardown.
Well, this is a teardown, that's why I'm asking.
Right, okay.
Uh, but, so if you tear it down, and then they can land for a year, then you've lost your pre-existing non-conformity, so, but immediate, you tear it down, rebuild.
Okay.
And that would be part of our usual condition, that I should adjust to it, too.
Like I said, just a question, I, I remember us having this conversation before, where a pre-existing condition didn't apply anymore.
There are also.
That was one where it had been taken down and wasn't, was left.
It could have been.
For a while, yeah, I can't remember the specific.
Yeah.
And the, the, um, the actual, I mean, this was good to look at.
That was kind of great.
Because, you know, we know that that neighborhood is already.
And the character of this neighborhood definitely is unique.
And so they are under, like a lot of the homes over there.
Personally. That would be the big difference, we, they still work, and less, and less of a variance. Got a people out of the church. Any more to schedule?
We have a timeout.
Are you in timeout there, Chris?
Just taking, taking a moment.
I apologize, you guys, I'm a little bit late to your meeting, uh, Brennan Marks here, if you guys have any more questions.
He might, he might be with us. Okay, we're, uh, we closed the public hearing, and we're just discussing, I assume you're for, uh, three, three, one, four, Fallbrook?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we closed the public hearing.
Okay.
The, the applicant presented the thing, and we closed it. You're welcome to listen now, you can't take any more information.
Yep.
Um, I actually figured out what you said, David.
So, Mike, do you want to speak to Shannon's question, if there's something I'm not seeing?
The, uh, they address all the existing, non-pre-existing non-conformities in their site plans, nothing's changed.
I, I agree, that's not what I'm asking.
Okay, so.
My question is, my understanding, which is very fly, um, is that if you're doing a teardown and a rebuild, I sort of don't care what your pre-existing con- non-conformities were, you'd have to get the variances for those again on the new structure.
Only if you make them worse, only if you expand on it.
And, and I accept that answer, except that's what I asked, and he's, he doesn't.
Town code section two-two-zero-dash-one-zero-seven-F, sub句, F-sub句, one. There's a pre-existing, oh. A pre-existing non-conformity may be repaired, replaced, or in other ways restored to its previous condition if damaged by fire, weather, or other unintentional cause, unless such restoration will create a threat to public health, safety, and/or wealth, such restoration must be completed within a reasonable time, as established by the code enforcement office. Paragraph, sub-paragraph two says, nothing in this chapter shall prevent the immediate strengthening or restoring to a safe condition, any structure which has been declared unsafe. Or restoring to a safe condition, any structure which has been declared unsafe.
I vaguely remember another case we had years ago, that somebody wanted to rebuild the barn. And tear it down and rebuild it on, and we, we gave, I don't know, we allowed them to do that.
So.
We allowed them to repair it, it wasn't.
Yeah, I think it could be repaired. And it, it could be repaired, and it can be replaced, if the. Reason it needs to be replaced is fire, weather, or other unintentional cause.
And actually, that patio, they need to repair and replace, I think, right, wasn't it? That?
Which?
Uh, pre-existing one? I think they said something about ice, like, whatever, and I said the foundation was all screwed up.
No, this, there is no pre-existing here, this is a teardown, the whole house is coming down, and a new one's being built.
So, we're gonna, we're, okay. I don't know how.
I mean, well, we, we used to work with logic rather than all the details about the, the size of the footprint.
Mm-hmm.
And that's, that's, uh, certainly, uh, worth bringing up again, that they've been pretty faithful to the footprint.
I, I'm not questioning that at all, I just remember we had a case not that long ago, where because it was a teardown and replace, they had to include the variances for those pre-existing things too. And it was somebody who was building, they had that funky room that had like sixteen entrances off the end.
Yeah.
It was that one, because they're tearing that down, they asked for the additional variance, and I'm pretty sure we granted them, but they had to include those variances. And that's all I'm asking is procedurally, is just the building coverage here an okay thing to ask for?
The answer is no.
So, we have to rewrite it, I mean, what is?
I think it needs to be re-advertised and the additional variances applied for.
Right.
If I may ask, what does the zoning law determination say?
I think, I'm assuming it says one variant.
I know.
But as we know.
Yeah, that's what we're following suit with.
I, I understand that.
I think this is another one, we probably need to research and go back, make sure that we've been consistent.
Yeah, because the neighbors most.
I, I was, and, and I was gonna say, realistically, we'd want to make sure the homeowners understand they actually want those additional variances on their property, if they're gonna need them. I mean.
I believe, uh. If I may speak.
Go ahead, Shannon.
Uh, the neighbors next door, the Anne Walls property, immediately adjacent to this site, we've had, we did the same thing, we're certified the pre-existing non-conformities of the side setback, and alls we saw, thought was the, uh. There was a lot coverage, and also I think there was a front setback on that one, because we were building a garage closer to the road, no, actually, that was just lot coverage.
Very well be, and that was a complete teardown.
Well, it just, I mean, we don't have to make.
No, actually, that. It was a teardown rebuild of the garage.
Yeah, just the garage.
And we added on to the house also.
Um. But I thought there were multiple variances, um.
There, there were, he said, there were. A front, some back end.
Yeah, cuz it's garage.
Right.
Um, sorry, I don't mean to derail everything.
No, no, I'm glad.
No, I think we need to get it right, and, uh.
I don't think this is, uh, dire, I think we, we skipped a step based on what you said, and we need to go back and make sure we don't skip a step. But in terms of the deliberation and the feeling, that may be the same, you know, it's, it, but us skipping a step, that's, that's something that we may pay for later time, if we're not careful.
What about like a teardown rebuild on it with it, you could ta, say it's like a new? A new, you know, site plan, without the, you know?
There is a new site plan.
I mean. Is that, it's just somehow.
It is.
There is a new site plan for this.
You could say it's a repair.
Right, so that's what I'm saying, like, maybe when.
If bulldozer backs into this building accidentally, then, I mean, it's, it's technicality, but it's the technicality that's in, that exists in our town code.
All right, we gotta look at them. I don't know, what do you guys suggest?
Well, again, again, you have sixty-two days to make a decision, um. If it looks like they're gonna have to reapply and re-expedite that, so we don't make it any more burdensome on the applicants.
Yeah.
But if now we can just vote on it.
Expose them while you're having. The non-conformities that are there, I'll change.
Can we, we, you know what, would be good, we would like to see some of the other fall work applications, just to make sure we're consistent, I think that's where we were. We're questioning it, because we know there's so many pre-existing non-conformities down there, but I feel like, I feel like we're skipping a step too, because I know we've voted on those things, but I don't know how we voted on for a whole teardown. I just wanna review, so, if that's possible.
It may work itself, it may work itself out, I mean, in the presentation, the, uh, given, you know, what was going on in the neighborhood, what was, came to us was, uh, seemed to be reasonable. However, Shannon brought it up that we, we could be stepping on our own toes if we're not careful, we have to, you know, uh, get this right.
Yeah, we gotta, let's look and see.
But let's, let's, Mike's asked a question, and it's a good question. Um, so the reason Shannon asked the question, so I looked it up, and it looks like our code says that. A pre-existing non-conformity, which is what we have, goes away unless it's torn down by fire or other unintentional cause. So, you lose the pre-existing non-conforming status when you tear it down. In that.
Right.
Unless there's an issue in the house, in this case, structurally.
Well, that's kinda why I threw that.
There's an issue.
Oh.
So, if there's, if there's an issue with the house, like you're saying, it's nobody's house, the foundation's probably not good.
Right.
That falls under that.
And it's a repair.
That's what I was thinking when I said. I mean, it's a, it's potential for you. Again, you have the other.
It's your decision to make.
Well, I mean, that could be part of our.
Okay, thanks to be a city attorney too, thank you.
Super.
If there's the other issue, we're probably. We've generally been consistent with it, doing it this way.
Okay, when you, so what do you guys, what do you think then? Uh, what?
Sort of stretching it.
I'll, I'll leave it blunt, I, I have no problem with them doing what they're proposing, it really is, I just questioning.
We wanna make sure.
The, questioning the process based on what I understand, but.
No, I agree.
And, and to our point, we're just following along with the zoning officer has, uh, written for determination.
Also, if I can add, I know it's close, but we talked about the foundation, it was actually differential settling in the garage, so it is, it is separate, separated from, from the main house.
As a matter of fact, we really want to save our cottage, we spent thousands trying to get everything researched and stuff. It's now the sound which.
I think we can find information.
No, no, I guess. There were structural issues that would let it fall under the. That person reading the code.
That would, that's what you said, right, Chris? But if there is a structural issue, then that, that's, uh.
Does it cover the whole house?
Let's take a look.
I mean, it does, I'm not sure, it covers the whole house and garage, you know? And we're adding on. You know?
Well, it says unless it was poured down by.
A pre-existing non-conformity may be repaired, replaced, or in other ways restored to its previous condition. If damaged by fire, extreme weather, or other unintentional cause. Here. Let me say. Eradicated by fire, weather, or other unintentional, it's damage by an unintentional cause. New York State Town Law, as you know, says that a zoning board is authorized to uphold a zoning law determination, hold it current, or. Make such decision as it feels fought to have been made. Now, the solution may be send, you know, get the applicant come back with more information about this, or apply for additional variances. Uh, or decide that it's been damaged by an unintentional cause, to the extent that. It requires repair, replace, or in other ways restored to its previous condition. You have, I mean, is there, uh, obviously, the, the town doesn't wanna hold you up any more than it has to. Are there, I mean, do you have contractors scheduled yet?
Yes.
Okay. For when?
Well, it, we have to leave the day.
The contractors will be here after Labor Day. Okay.
Um. It does have structural damage, because both properties adjacent to north and south are located much higher. And somehow, we have so much water flowing through our property. Um, because of that, and that really settled the garage about, I would say, two inches. It's just the garage part.
I guess if you.
I can tell you.
From what they say, it could be replaced, but you couldn't do addition.
That's right, and it is.
The replacement would be the one-car garage, if they reapplied and asked for an expanded one-car garage, which means bigger than standard, don't know if you, if you could, uh, uh, get away with that. But certainly, something called a two-car garage as a replacement for one, I don't think was covered with, with what Chris said.
I personally would feel more comfortable if we were to ask the applicant to come back with all requesting the variances for everything, even with pre-existing. But I will, uh, go with, you know, whatever the chairman says is the best of.
I think that, particularly since it hasn't contracted the end of the, for, uh, Labor Day. I think that would be the proper way to do it.
So, Shannon, is that a motion to do that, to do so?
Yes.
Should we look at past cases, I mean?
Oh, no, cuz they don't have any impact on this. I, I mean, you're supposed to do it the right way, every time, if you did it the wrong way in the past, that doesn't mean you should do it the wrong.
No, I know, but I'm like wondering where, where we drop, if.
I'm, I'm pretty sure, I mean, for the ones that I've seen, we've been pretty consistent in this. Um. Could some have slipped through that, that we're done with this, absolutely.
That's why I kept asking if it was expanding outside of it, or whatever.
You know, my initial reaction was obviously incorrect, but, you know, but it was my initial reaction, oh, yeah, yeah, no, that's no problem. So, is that something this board has done? Probably, possibly.
Never.
So, the motion, man, of Shannon?
Or else?
The, the, uh, my motion would be to, uh, ask the applicant to return with, uh, requesting the additional variances for these side setbacks.
And continue this public hearing, that way they can get on that agenda.
Right, yeah, right away, okay. I second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Hi. Right, well, well, I'm sorry for the.
Guys, if I, if I may though, I just wanna, I wanted the zoning officer to chime in here, because we, we've been led down this path here. So, uh, obviously, we would have applied for four variances if we would, if that was gonna be the fact right off the beginning. Um, you know, we've been said, provide, provide a variance for the lot coverage, and that's it, you know, now we're at this place, now we're, we're going backwards. So, I would ask the zoning officer to chime in on this determination.
I, I stand by my determination, I still think it don't need the other variances, but it is up to the zoning board to make their decisions, I, I'm still behind my zone law.
Okay. I'm gonna guess that's Mike Warner speaking.
Yes.
Town zoning officer, Mike Warner.
Okay, so. Seeking the additional, the, the variances, I understand.
Okay, did you vote on that motion?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and to be clear, it's everything is gonna apply, basically.
If they bring this question, we should, we have to. Vote on a full name or?
Nope. You're order, not yet, you don't, you got sixty-two days to do this.
All right. All right, so, we'll see you next month.
And thank you, folks.
Have a nice time. Sorry, I took that.
Appreciate your time, thank you. We'll talk about that, have a good night.
Okay, uh, do you think, you know, it's, no one's, they tore down the whole house, completely out of compliance. Six variances, huh? We did variances wrong, so I don't think.
Well, that was one that I was wondering about. I think we did.
I know we've done in the past that we've had multiple variances.
Okay, well, let's move on here, um. See, we have the Susan Wade, one, four, one, four, eight, County Road sixteen, the lot coverage of variance of one point two percent. In addition to the previous one that was given.
Oh, which, uh.
Wait.
Oh.
You know, we had given a variance.
Right, this is the, adding the patio.
Next up on the staff.
Yeah.
For the staff change. Uh, that. Imagine what they. Twenty point foot patio, covered patio, onto a roughly eighteen square foot. Nine shed. And now she wants ninety square feet of patio. Just, she, there was a, she had bought two large tables for.
Yeah, that's the part I get hung up on.
She what?
She bought two bigger table.
We asked her why she needed the addition, and she said the table she had bought wouldn't fit on the patio she had been renting.
Yeah. And she tarred that patio out, right, so, but she had the cover, that was, yeah. So, yeah.
Got the additional information about the semi-perenable paper, and, uh. Certainly not clear whether those versus grass are much different.
All right, well.
Anybody have any further questions or?
No.
Ready to vote? Okay, call the question.
Sure, uh, Susan Wade, forty-one, forty-eight, County Road sixteen, there's two variances to vote on, the first is. Shall the area lot coverage variance of one point two percent be granted, the second is shall the variance for third accessory structure be granted? Shannon Chevier?
No.
Bob Villier?
Yes.
David Emery?
Yes.
Kelly LaVoy?
No.
Chip Saylor?
No. And we need, uh.
Were there any reasons?
Well, I think, no, number one.
Let's, and just, so. Let's, and just, so this is obvious, can I just, if you don't mind, Chip?
Yeah.
This is different than a granting, so Corinne, maybe take down the reasons that the board about to give, and I could help you tomorrow to, if you need help.
Okay.
To make those findings. We need findings to support the NILE, just as much as we do the support of groupos.
Okay, um. My, my problem with this is that, you know, they're saying, well, it's only one point two percent variance, but they had just gotten twelve point one percent. And weren't asking for it at that time. Uh, I'm not sure it would have mattered if the staff mix-up hadn't been back on the other one. I'm not sure if you would have gotten the other one, but, uh, I think, uh. I don't know, it just seems like they're, they're, and I guess might hurt to question if we really calculate out the area of maybe actually be more than.
Oh, I know. And well, and one of the things too, I don't think she did, I mean, her reason was because she bought a bit too big of a table, I mean.
Benefit to the.
I mean, you gotta kind of weigh the odds there. Do we give her extra because she bought a regular table or?
And I forgot, you know, what you mentioned, because I'm thinking it wasn't significant what they're asking for, but when you put the two together, it really was, and I forgot that, so.
And it's not a big.
So it becomes significant.
Right.
When you add the incremental amount.
Right.
And the benefit to the applicant does not outweigh the detriment to the neighborhood and community, right? The table.
More pretty.
Very correct.
Right.
You were.
Yeah, there's not a lot of, you know, a lot of green space and.
Yeah, if, if you start doing this with, oh, I'm only asking for one thing if you don't think.
Right, right.
I'll be back next year and last year.
For another one, yeah.
I mean, it's, it's sort of, it is a small amount, but it's not a small amount when you.
Yes, you're absolutely. I'm assuming you who weren't at last week's, uh, board meeting have already watched the recording. But this is sort of what came up, what, what a lot of the discussion was, was where do you draw the line? Um, and if you keep redrawing the line, then you need to, then it can be an indicator that your zoning ordinance is flawed or needs to be addressed. But with lot coverage and that kind of thing, you know, I don't know that that's true, because if you keep giving one percent, then it's a we could just have twenty-one percent.
Yeah, absolutely.
Deal out. Um, but I don't think that is the the stuff fix here. I think it is shortened out, it really fell off, as you obviously just did, I think. All sort of saw that as the thing that did most. But you've obviously already watched the recordings and felt that that was for.
Okay, we're also, anything else we would want to?
Uh, self-created hardship. What's it, a self-created hardship?
Yes, there you go.
Or did the table create?
Do we have anything else, Tommy? Bowl of space. Is that a wrap up? I'm good.
You would take a look at the reason others, because I could see there may be a tip right from.
Yeah, yeah. Well, and you gotta do it right. And it's what, which has demonstrated that. Um, or you gotta do it the way you think is right, and the best of your abilities, and it's, you know, it's.
Right. Now we're good.
Okay, let's see, what else we have here? Okay, the, uh, North Street, those variances for the active signs. I personally don't see any real problem.
I, I, I'm trying to be quiet because I've only been involved with like one other deliberation on signs, and y'all are a little weird when it comes to signs, so.
Did you say y'all are a little weird when it comes to signs?
She sure did.
Turn me off that now, please.
Yeah.
Weird when it comes to, Mike, can I ask a silly question? Should I know this? Are the rules we're addressing here industri- signs in an industrial zoning district, or is this just general sign laws?
Oh.
It's also, is this in an industrial zoning district?
Yeah, it is industrial over there.
Just assumed it was.
Yeah, it is. That whole area is by where the meats place.
But are these just general sign regulations?
They, yeah, they are general sign regulations. Kristen handles signs, and what I do, but, from what I know, is the signs are, it's a couple of zones.
Okay.
I, I.
And that, just couldn't remember.
I can maybe give you a little, I was on the, uh, ordinance committee, and it's like two things that have been big in my lifetime here. One was swimming.
Chickens.
Yes.
Yeah.
And, and the other was, and the thing with the signs, it's a big deal with the auto guys on the strip. And, and if you give any of them an inch, they'll take a mile, and then it's everybody. And then they'll tell you, well, corporate says we've got to have the sign on the roof and all that. Well, you know, that's, that's not our problem, that's their problem. But that's the way they want to sell it, and, but you have to be careful, because when you're being a nice guy with one, you know, outfit with the signs, that can come back and bite you. I, I'm absolutely, uh, sure. This, this seemed reasonable to me.
I was gonna say, I get the, they're just trying to direct people to where they need to go. I mean, it's not like they're advertising, it's not like huge advertising.
Right.
This is a major, major.
Yeah, right.
Yeah. I've seen track, parallel tracks get lost out there.
Oh, yeah. Well, how would, how would they find it? I mean, I was thinking to myself, there's no sign there now? I mean, that's kind of stupid, you know, don't you think? That's kind of.
I thought it was reasonable, but he kind of contradicted himself, because at one point he said, we want to sign up on the fence so the trucker can say, or they don't run over it. But then the other, the first one he put in, he wanted it down low, but it doesn't matter in the big picture, you know, uh. Yeah.
No, it's a large employer and they have a lot of space.
Sure. Mike, do you have a, or sorry, did you have a position on this, or?
On some, just what was said, for this business, if the signs that they're using, I don't see an issue with it at all, uh, but keep in mind, you're gonna have a couple of signs coming up next month, so.
Well, and, and is, are they advertising signs, or are they more, see, the, the, yeah.
Yeah, so that's where, like you said.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, we've had them in the past.
Always, well, corporate's.
We have.
Exactly.
What are they gonna do if you don't?
We've, we've been, we've had this issue since I've been on the board.
Exactly.
You know, when Randy Farnes, you know, the Farnes were brought, yeah, they had like twenty-five square feet.
And the answer is, they, they never are satisfied with it. They always want more.
Yeah, we did square footage, we did lumber.
And, and well, also, is the sign part of the roof? We even had, there's all kinds of, uh, new ones with this, and the.
There's always five.
But those, the auto guys, whoa, that's.
Hello. I think you can call the question on the sign.
I'm sorry.
Great question about his signs.
Right.
Fifty-two fifty North Street, there's three variances. The first is shall the area variance of twenty square feet be granted on one hundred square foot sign? The second is shall the front sat back variance of five point five feet be granted, and the third is shall six area variances be granted for six points, one and a half square meters. Uh, Shannon Chauvier?
Yes.
Bob Villier?
Yes.
David Emery?
Yes.
Kelly LaVoy?
Yes.
Chip Saylor?
Yeah. Okay, um, so he has presented, uh, the night. Um.
Wait, then we have a, like a finding sheet that you guys love.
Yeah.
What?
Uh, the benefit to the, um.
Oh, do you need?
For the applicant, uh, outweighs the benefits and any of it.
Right here.
Yeah, why don't you just go through that real quick?
Because everybody forgot their copy.
Yeah, I'll give it to Chip so he can read through it.
Oh, you got it.
Oh, I got mine too. Look at that, look at that.
Um, does it what? And, and, well, I, I just trying to. I'm good to you. Um. I think it's within the character of the neighborhood. A gentleman nearby property, so.
It's an industrial area.
It is an industrial area, um.
Actually directional signs will help, you know, the process, exactly, traffic safety.
The placements of the sign on fences to make it much more, so you can put it anywhere else.
I agree. Well, this situation anyway, yeah.
It's.
In this situation.
Some of that area is pretty rural, like there's a lot of.
I would think this, you know, they would have to do it within a year.
Yes.
Okay. Chris, it's very funny, and probably are about that, I can't remember the name.
You just can't let this go on, dude.
No, 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 but I'm saying that if you're right, then that would truly support Shannon's position on this, that they actually did go for all those variants.
I think so.
I vaguely remember that we did have to.
I'm not sure that one stayed in the, stayed in the program. I, I don't know, but I mean, it's hard to say.
Recall.
No.
There was a couple.
Big haircuts.
No.
I seem to recall, so I said.
You, you, I'm sure you're right on it, but I'm just saying that even that, you know, if they.
Yeah. We also could have gotten it wrong. Mike could have called me in the past, and I said, oh, no, I just did it in front of everybody. Oh, okay, no, it's fine to do it that way.
We, we, we saw it, and we made a mental note the next day.
Yeah, it's probably not the first time.
I had.
There are haircuts, right?
No, I mean.
Are these out there down to rebuild? Those addresses?
No, not all of them.
They might get through the zoning law determination in accordance with, you know, what he saw in the zoning code, that's perfectly, that's a good solid zoning determination.
There may be one in there that's.
The question came up in the middle of the meetings. Take it out the best we can do.
Well, that fall broke, I mean, honestly, we can go through every house in there, I think, every house, or something. But the thing is, the difference is, is that they have expanded, tried to expand outside that pre-existing issue, so.
Block out.
All right, um, we have any, uh, referrals from anywhere? No?
Can I ask on the Sierra sign what we're looking for?
It's already up, and it's bigger than it's supposed to be, is that why?
No, no, it's not. The sign that's there is five. Am I wrong there?
No, the sign is up, they put up, it's too big.
Oh, the sign that's there is too big. I thought she wanted to put a bigger one up.
No, they, they felt that the one that's up there now isn't, um, it, the one that they have to put up doesn't conform to the size of their sign.
Okay.
Our regulation.
That sign is pretty big.
So what we're looking for, Mike's gonna find out if we give a TJ Maxx and.
We didn't, uh, so the thing is, so for TJ Maxx, we denied him the one sign, the light-up sign, because they wanted one or two light-up signs in the breezeway there, or our walkway, and, um, and I'm pretty sure we made him stay with, and they just redid the sign that they had and kept it, from what I remember, but, I mean, I don't think we, I, we did not, I know we denied the light-up signs in the, in the walk.
You know what you need in those, by the way? It's not just Kennedy was driving one and by Rochester. You need ones that stick out into the road, so you can, as you're driving, you know where you're going.
Right.
Where to stop.
So.
He's trying to kill us all. He's trying to kill us all.
All right. Anything else, anybody?
Yes, I do. Um, for those of us that were, that did listen to the recording of the joint, joint. Um, I mean, to be quite honest with you, and I didn't say anything at the time, because I, I actually think I voted against the variance. I think we got trashed by the planning board and by Mr. Tolbert, and, and, and I don't think it was fair. I mean, it was a you could listen to the recording of what he said, but it was about the Poplar Beach one, and it was in a floodplain, and it caused a lot of extra work for the planning board. But I never heard any word about the determinations of what we did, and I, I mean, even if I voted against it, and I probably did.
I stood up for you. I said, you made, but the decision is based on what zoning boards are supposed to make decisions on.
You, you did, but I agree with Dave. That whole meeting was a little bit of a, I mean, when the moderator stands up there and says, all right, we're gonna address all the town's problems, tell me all the variances we've been approving. And just starts the whole thing off like that, that really was. So it's all your fault? Yeah. And, and we, we've heard from multiple people how if there's anything to do with coverage at the lake, everything should be a no. Why is this so hard for us?
Yeah, that's, until they.
Yeah.
That, that sounds good until it's their buddies and what, what they want going. There's so much, you know, there's so many layers of self-interest, but that, that's what everyone's, uh, you know, every, uh, community has out. What we all have in common is we want the literacy.
Yeah, we're. Let's, let's make sure everybody's listening, especially the chairman, because he was not at this meeting.
Yeah, no, that was.
Which is totally okay.
I'm not saying it wasn't in every instance, but I mean, I mean, I wanted to bring up the, you know, the Palmyra water. What we had to do. I mean, these are not simple in, in a lot of cases, and I mean, I think anybody is, is pretty naive to think that even in the floodplain of, of that water gets to the lake one way or another. Sorry, but, you know, I, I think we're just trying to do the best we can, and and I'm sorry, I just didn't appreciate that one, and, and I'm not denying that you did stand up for, for. It is, it was several, was that?
I know, there's a replay, right?
Yeah, that's right.
I know, I didn't even think.
So. I think what happened is, starting out that way, what variances are you seeing? Is a good way to address all of the town's zoning problems, because it says, if you're granting, uh, you know what I just noticed, uh, that nobody said what happens on the lot length times width, uh, it's deeper than it is wide. Uh, nobody mentioned that, but those come up a lot, maybe we address that. Accessory structure in the side yard on, in the AR two, maybe we address them instead of having to grant variances. You know, lakeside lot coverage, it's a, you know, it's a tricky thing, and I think this board looks at it very carefully, um, and doesn't, uh, take it, take it lightly at all. Uh, but I think they started, I think it started out that way, because sometimes, I mean, some of those things, those topics can just get knocked off. Okay, let's fix that, let's fix that. Um. In terms of variances being. Changed zoning code on.
To see what the community is looking for, and do other variances.
You're granting every single, uh, variance for accessory structures inside yard and the AR, AR two, stop having them be prohibited. Um. You know, lot coverage on the lake is always been, uh, a touchy subject in this town, and justifiably so. It's, I mean, it's obvious, it's a touchy subject based on how intense this board gets when it's granting those variances, and, you know, strict. Uh. People are entitled to be upset.
Mm-hmm. The other aspect of the lake properties is the issue of what's on the lake side of the road versus that. I mean, if somebody's got two acres off of, um, off the building, there are, you know, the rest of the road and the side, like, you know, they can put a lot of stuff down at the lake.
It is, some of that came up with the whole swimming pool topic, this swimming pool between houses in the lake.
Chuck, do you have anything, any comments to offer on that topic?
Uh, can you hear me? Hi, guys. Uh, not really. Uh, I, I just know that a lot of the, uh, applications we have down along the lake, that what the decisions that are made by the ZBA sometimes affect the decisions, the considerations of the planning board, and vice versa. Uh, we, you know, especially as most of our purview is involved with the stormwater management, and when we get into looking at trying to control stormwater, if we're dealing with a difficult lot, as you folks well know, it, uh, it makes it a little tougher to deal with. So I, I think it's just a matter of, of us, uh, staying in touch with each other, both boards, and I, I, I think there was suggestion that certainly if the ZBA feels they need a referral to the planning board for something, uh, an opinion on our side before you render decision, similar to what you did with the ECB on the one application you had tonight, uh, certainly feel free to reach out to. Uh, certainly feel free to reach out to us. And we'll give you our comments, and it may help you decide from a planning, stormwater uh, side of, side of this issue, uh, how we can handle it. So uh, again, it it's cooperation, working together, and let's try to keep that spirit going, guys.
Uh, the other thing you can ask for the planning board, but you can also ask for staff comments and or engineering comments.
We have actually requested.
Yeah, but I mean, maybe that's.
Yeah.
Uh, on one of these, the boat enforcement officer had marked up the site plan. Uh, I think those were from a more of a site plan perspective, but you know, maybe, maybe that is a good way to handle that, Mike. On variances on the lakefront, like Murphy's two cents, uh, with, you know, in terms of drainage and stuff like that.
I have one other question. The, this is the first time I've heard of the county commenting on uh, anything on the east side of the lake. It's always been the, you know, in the RLD on County Road sixteen. Is this gonna change again? I know I'd heard before that the county was saying that they weren't even gonna review every single little nuance.
They weren't gonna comment at all unless they had to.
They're not reviewing everything. They actually cut back on a lot, but when it comes to the RLD, they're still very interested in.
Okay.
Any more random discussion here?
With the cover, no.
Uh, we do need to approve the minutes. May twenty-third. So.
Uh huh.
Um.
I don't think there's the intention. It was not the intention.
Somebody's.
They did, yes, uh, uh, um, almost over.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Any other business anyone have? Entertaining the motion, you're in them?
The motion. I'm always the one that motions to leave. Is there anybody else who wants to get out of here?
Oh, sure, alright.
Get it from us.